Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the North Hampton School Committee for Monday, March 17, 2014. We'll begin tonight's meeting by asking the clerk to call the role of the school committee.
Mr. DeBach?
Present.
Ms. Anne Henderson?
Present.
Mr. Richard Meyer?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Henry Porter?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Shalhoub?
Here.
Mr. Edgar Hosky?
Present.
And Mayor Beadmore?
Present.
Your Honor.
Thank you very much. So, we have a very specialized agenda for this evening's meeting, and that is to continue our superintendent's search. And we will begin, the first item on the agenda is the announcement of the superintendent finalist candidates, and I will turn it over to the vice chair of the school committee, who chaired our screening committee, Mr. Edward Zehauske.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. This evening, I am pleased to report on the activities of the North Hampton Superintendent Screening Committee. Over the last three weeks, the screening committee met on several occasions to review applications and interview candidates for the position of Superintendent of Schools, and we are very pleased with the overall quality of the applicant pool. There were 22 completed applications for the position. The screening committee reviewed all 22 applications and subsequently selected a number of candidates who were invited to meet with the screening committee for a preliminary interview. Following the preliminary interviews and after much discussion and consideration, the screening committee during its meeting on March 12 voted to recommend three candidates for further consideration by the North Hampton School Committee. The three candidates listed in alphabetical order are Lori Kazna, who has been the Director of Personnel and Student Services in Pembroke, Massachusetts since 2011. She's a resident of Plitmuth, Massachusetts. Ms. Kazna has been a Special Education teacher and elementary team chairperson in Situate and Duxbury, and from 2007 to 2011 held positions of Coordinator and Director of Special Education, also in Pembroke. Ms. Kazna earned her bachelor's degree from the University of Arizona, a master's in education, and certificate of advanced graduate study from Bridgewater State College, and a Juris Doctor Professional Degree in Legal Studies from Suffolk University Law School. The second is Jordana Harper Ewart of Amherst. She is, of Amherst, is Chief Schools Officer overseeing 16 schools in Springfield, Mass, a position she's held since January of 2013. Over a four-year period, Ms. Harper Ewart was a teacher and administrative intern in Greenfield, Springfield, and Amherst, and in 2007 was appointed as principal of the Sergeant Robert R. Litwin Elementary School in Chicopee. Ms. Harper Ewart holds a bachelor's degree from Mount Hoi Ok College, a master's degree in education from Endicott College. She is a doctoral candidate in educational leadership at Leslie University. And third, John Provost of East Stampton has been the Superintendent of Schools in North Brookfield, Massachusetts since 2011. His professional experience includes teaching English in the Dudley-Chartlton Regional District, an education coordinator for EDCO Collaborative in Brookline, special education teaching and supervisory positions in Hoi Ok from 2000 to 2003, and he was the Director of Special Services in Agawam from 2003 to 2011. Dr. Provost holds a bachelor's degree from Westfield State College and earned masters and doctorate degrees in education from the University of Massachusetts. On behalf of the school committee and the city of North Hampton, I'd like to thank the members of the screening committee for their many hours they devoted to reviewing applications, interviewing candidates, and deliberating during the preliminary selection process. The conversations were lively, insightful, and courteous. It was a pleasure to work with this group of truly dedicated citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you again to the members of the screening committee for their service to the North Hampton Public Schools. We'll now move on, now that we have the announcement of the three finalists. We'll now have a discussion on the rest of the superintendent candidate interview process, and I'd like to recognize Dr. Arthur Betancourt from Nezdek, who's been helping, advising the city on this search process. And we'll turn the floor over to you, Dr. Betancourt, to discuss the next steps, now that we've selected our three finalists.
Thank you very much. Congratulations coming to this portion of your search. There was a lot of hard work that led to this, and I had the pleasure of meeting with your screening committee for their first meeting, and I was really, truly impressed with the commitment that folks had toward having this search bring to you three, what I think are three really fine candidates. Mr. Mayor, may I pass some things?
Please, please.
What I'm giving you now are the actual application packets for the candidates that we introduced to you. These packets are considered personnel files, and therefore they're confidential and they're marked as such. Mr. David Zehauske has copies of public resumes which can be handed out to the public. These documents I'm giving you will remain confidential.
Thank you.
And I put together some materials that'll help us with the conversation this evening and some in terms of some of the decisions that
Thank you.
One of the things I wanted to bring to your attention right away is that you're ahead of schedule. You were originally, if you look at the folder that I gave you and you take out the timeline, which is a document that looks like this, you can see, if you move down into the end of the grayish blue section here, Candidates Recommended to School Committee. We actually had planned for a meeting on March 20 to announce the candidates, so you were actually ahead of schedule. And those few days of being early can actually make quite a difference in terms of your moving ahead now with the next phases of the search. Also, on the left-hand side of the packet here, we have an outline of some of the things that we will want to go over this evening. And essentially, what we're talking about is the school committee's role moving forward with the search, which is somewhat different from the screening committee's role. The screening committee did most of its preliminary screening work, or did all of its preliminary screening work, and the interviewing of the candidates in executive session. The fact is that now, as you move forward, the school committee will do virtually all of its work in public session, including the decision-making regarding the search phases going forward, as well as your conversations with the superintendent candidates, and even your final conversation regarding your final decision. All of that occurs in public. About the only thing from this point on that would occur in executive session will be your ultimate contract negotiations with your finalists, with the final candidate that you choose. So what we really want to talk about tonight are your ideas in terms of how you'd like to move forward. There were a lot of different things, a lot of different ways that this can be done, but the fact of the matter is the decisions on how it's done, I can provide options for you, but the decisions on how it's done rest with the school committee. So there are a couple of things that we should talk about right away. One is the schedule in terms of how you would like to interact with candidates moving forward, and then, once we determine that, determining how your interviews will unfold, how you will actually go about the task of setting yourselves up for the interviews. In terms of next steps, as I said, there are a number of ways to go, and let me just sort of outline those for you. Some school committees choose simply to do an interview of each candidate, call references, perhaps, and make a decision. That obviously reduces the timeline necessary for the decision-making, but it doesn't necessarily give you all of the information that you might need going forward. Some school committee members choose to have the visit, to have the candidates visit the district, interact with people in the district, give people an opportunity, provide some feedback to the school committee, and then, subsequent to that, an interview. And then, subsequent to the interview, perhaps a visit to the candidate's present district or institution. All of these things sort of play out in terms of the kinds of activities that you folks are comfortable with, and in terms of the timeline and the length of the timeline. For example, if you choose to have candidates come in-house to visit you, what typically happens is a candidate will come for the better part of a day, or perhaps an afternoon. We'll tour the district, we'll speak with people, and then that evening, we'll have an interview with the school committee. If you have three finalists, as you do now, that's usually done on three evenings. It can be done, you can double up, but typically it's done a day devoted to each of the candidates plus an evening. And then, if you choose to visit the candidates, again, that's another, and that's usually done by a small subcommittee, which might be made up of all school committee members, could be made up of school committee members and others, who would, excuse me, visit the districts of the candidates. And again, this requires some time. So part of what you're dealing with is not only the process in terms of the kinds of information you need, but also the timeline that you have in terms of choosing the candidates. Now, some of these candidates are, in fact, in other searches, so it would not be unusual for you to be competing against any number of districts for any of these candidates. So that's something to take into consideration as you move forward. So perhaps what I would do at this point is turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, and ask you, through you, to maybe determine how the school committee feels comfortable moving forward.
Okay. So let me open it up for discussion. Ms. Minnick?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Did you say that visit, site visits to the candidates' current districts would be done after interviews, or can it be done before?
It can be done in any order, and it varies depending upon how you want the thing, how you want the search to play out. But you could visit the candidates' districts first. One of the things to consider when you visit the candidates, however, is that they need lead time to set that up, and that it needs to be a fair amount of time because your coming into the district can cause some disruption. So we want to provide as much time as we can for the candidates to inform the people in the district and set up your itinerary so that you can make the best of your visit and the most of your visit.
Did you have a?
I just wanted to ask that one question.
Okay. So, other folks have any questions or comments or discussion about the various options for how do we structure this process?
I would say the one comment I have is that, given our last search and what people in North Hampton have said to me, and I'm sure other people, that they needed, they would like a little bit more time for their input to be heard by us. It felt rushed last time, so whatever that means for here, just anything but that rushed kind of all in one night.
Okay. Yes?
I would just second that. I think that's important. And also, as many of us will recall, we were sitting here and we had to take in all the sheets of information that we had from people, and wasn't really, didn't have a lot of time to digest that information. So anything we could do to avoid that, I would suggest.
Those are the public comment sheets and the?
Yeah. From the administrators and the teachers and the public.
Okay.
Right. I would agree. I think when we schedule dates, whatever we schedule, we should schedule a date to make a decision that is at least, you know, at least, I think, three days after our last, you know, interview, so that we have, so we plan to have several days to sleep on it before we start to discuss it publicly. That'd be my suggestion.
Zehauske?
Oh, and then? Well, I, just, one concern about that, and I'd like to just get Mr. Betancourt to comment on it. He did make a statement that the three finalists that we have in front of us, in fact, could be involved in other searches, and so I would like to move as quickly as we can, but also offer enough time for community input. But I think there is a little sense of urgency now that we've made our announcement of finalists to keep the process moving and not spread it out too long. So if it's seven, if we didn't have to sleep on it for 72 hours, maybe 24 hours or 36 hours would somewhere be a good compromise.
Something other than the same night.
Right. Sounds good to me.
Just to add to that, I would say, out of respect for the candidates, because once they've been through the interview, sitting there waiting on pins and needles, wondering what the result of it is.
We'll have told them when that date will be. They'll know.
Yeah, yeah.
Relax for two days.
Right. They can take two days, but it is, I think, I understand your concern and I agree with it, but I also want to be sensitive to their feelings. So I would think if we can do it the next night or the night after, that would be ideal. So as not to keep them on tender hooks any longer than they need to be.
Other comments? So you've heard some of the discussion.
Let me try to help. One of the ways that you can shorten a search, and I'm not advocating for this, but in terms of the fact that you may, in fact, you may be competing with other school districts for some of these candidates, one of the ways that you can shorten your work is to substitute for a site visit to their district, intensive telephone calls to references. That can, that can give you some time at the end, and that's a decision you don't have to make now, you can make it as you move down. Because in fact, as you go through, if what I'm hearing is that you want the candidates to visit this district and then interview in the evening or something like that, and you want to provide ample time for community input, you may in fact learn as much as you need to know about the candidates at that point to feel comfortable with the decision. So the site visits to their district, you could hold out as an option until you've moved into the process, and that might give you some flexibility. I think I'm hearing, Mr. Mayor, that people are gravitating toward a visit to this district and interviews in that evening. Am I overinterpreting that, or?
I think that's okay. I think the concern was that last time, that it all happened on the same day.
Okay.
So I think we, I think we had all three visiting the same day and then interviewing the same evening, so it was kind of a lot
That can be very difficult.
A long day for staff and also to try to coordinate all of that, so.
Okay.
I think that's, so I think that's the, yes?
And again, I'm just, the other side of that is that it's one long day versus three days of having three separate candidates in the district, and it's difficult for parents to, you know, to show up for interviews on separate nights. So having the candidates come in one after another, while it makes for a difficult day for the staff and a difficult day for the candidates, it actually is kind of easier. So I definitely think that we need to put time between the interviews and our decision. I think that was clear. The rest of it, I think, is kind of what, whatever works.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I would, I think I may be saying the same thing, but maybe not. I'm not sure. The, if I had to choose
Because you don't know what you're saying, or you don't know what I said.
Right. If I had, no, I know what I'm gonna say. If I had to choose, if it was a matter of choosing, if I was gonna use three days for three separate interviews versus three days to think about the interview, the interviews, I would take the three days to think about it versus spreading out the interviews and then having tomorrow, let's make a decision. I feel like that's, if that was the choice. And I know it may not be the choice, because when we get down to actual dates, it may not prove to be that.
Yes?
I would actually agree. I think doing them all in one evening makes more sense, as long as we can do it planfully. I think it's helpful when you have all three candidates interviewing in the same night. For me, it might be easier to compare them and to compare their answers, so.
Does a minor counterpoint to that, one of the criticisms we got last time to the point about parents is to have three visiting all day, that's still gonna be, put a crimp in somebody's time to get off work or whatever it is. Whereas if it's three separate nights, and if we do it here, for instance, and we have the television, that might be able to help as well for people who can't get here in person.
Any guidance?
There really isn't. I think it really depends upon what you're comfortable doing, and as you can see from the discussion, there are pros and cons to both. I really don't know what to tell you other than we're happy to work with whatever format you choose to follow, and there seems to be some divergence of opinion as to how that should go, so.
Okay.
I guess I'd have to hear more.
Do you all in know sort of what timeframe we're looking at for interview dates?
I think you're probably looking at next week, early next week.
That soon?
I, if you, yeah, I think that if you want to move on this, I think you'd be looking at next week.
Okay. Okay. So I guess we should try to reach some consensus, so it sounds like the options that we're discussing are to sort of mimic the format we had before, which was to try to consolidate the visits and the interviews in one session, but then to put off the actual deliberation until another, a night other than the interview night, which is what we ended up doing. We did end up doing that last time. We didn't make a, I don't believe we made a decision that night. We did defer it for a couple of nights. We were exhausted by the end of the three interviews, so we did, that's sort of the format we followed before. The concern was the visits happened during the day, and then we got feed, parents filled out feedback forms throughout the day, and then we got them that night, so we really had to try to figure out how did we, I mean, I guess then we would just have to work with that as we went along, so.
If I may, there is, there is an option that you could explore. I don't know that it will work for you folks. You could interview the candidates on one night and set up visitations on separate days subsequent to that, if that would work in terms of giving folks in the community an opportunity to interact. That's another possibility.
Okay.
It requires, it requires the candidates to come back twice instead of once, but if we can schedule it, that could be done as well.
Okay. And then, and so there would be some sort of a public, an opportunity for the public to meet with those candidates?
Yeah, and it could be something as simple as some sort of a reception in the afternoon. You can break up and have separate groups that the applicants would meet with. For example, you might have a forum for faculty and staff at 3:00 in the afternoon, or whenever you get out, whenever teachers are available, you might have a, an opportunity for the candidate to meet with administrative staff from 4:30 to 5:00 or whatever, and then perhaps a light refreshment reception at 6:30, something like that. I mean, it's really whatever works for you folks. It's not unusual for the parent-teacher group to, or for the parents' group to become involved and maybe sponsor the receptions in the evening if your folks are, you know, are wanting to do that.
Mr. Shalhoub?
I just, maybe I missed this, but last time, we also didn't get to the stage about the visiting the candidates' districts, and if that's something that we're gonna be doing, that would, of course, extend the timeline a little bit. So I just wonder, would we be thinking about visiting all three? Would we be thinking about visiting one or two? Looking for the wisdom of the group on that, because that could give, if it gives us more time, which it will, that could take care of one pressure point.
Did you have a thought on that?
I did have a thought on that. When we did the principal searches at the schools, we went to the home of the person that we decided upon and before we made the ultimate decision. It was basically offered to whomever contingent upon the home visit. And as Mr. Betancourt said, a lot of information was gathered through all the different processes, so that was one thought I had on that. And then the other thought to go on the same thing is that it's an awful lot on the, even though the candidates would have to come back, it's an awful lot on the candidates, and they themselves had said that to me, that about, that it was a very long day to do the interviews and to meet the people, and that it's, it was very stressful for them because it was so different. I mean, and it did feel so rushed. So in a way, even though they are coming back, it might actually be more fair or feel better if they did interviews and that type of thing one day, and then go out and do the form and the greeting of the people another day. So those are the two thoughts I had.
Yes?
Whatever we do, I do think, I mean, I hear the reception, I'm hoping implicit in that is a time for a formal question period for parents?
It could be any way, any, you could structure it any way you wished, sure.
Okay.
What's the, I mean, this might sound like a silly question, I don't mean it to, but what is the benefit, I mean, I'm looking at the resumes quickly, of visiting their district? Because it seems like having really rich kind of conversations with the references would, would glean a lot, given what their current positions are. And what, can you give your professional opinion about visiting the district itself? What that could add?
Well, I think it has value in terms of the number of people that you might interact with as you're, for example, as you're walking around the district, you might want to talk to a paraprofessional, you might want to talk to a custodian, folks that you might not necessarily run into or might not necessarily contact by telephone. It sort of gives you a broader flavor. On the other hand, I will say, more and more districts, in our experience, more and more districts are opting for the intensive telephone conversations rather than the visits to the district. And if I may just come back around, in terms of how you might proceed toward deciding who you're going to visit, you might want to think about that, too, because if you narrow down your field too soon, you may find that you're losing the very candidate that you're trying to land. So I would suggest that you keep your options open as long as you can. So if you're going to make a decision to visit only one candidate, you've pretty much, you've pretty much done it. But at that point, if that candidate is being looked at by other districts, other districts can also accelerate to the point where they can make a decision and perhaps interfere with your decision, if you will. So you want to be careful about how you narrow down the field and when you can.
Okay. So, so we've just discussed an option of having all three interviews, have the interviews occur on one day, and then set up the community, the community meetings, the staff meetings, the other, you know, the more public face of the process on a different day. And would, and would that happen, so that would happen all on the same day staggered? Or it would be the same, or just three separate days, basically?
Could be either, whatever you chose.
Okay.
Whoever you wanted to organize.
Okay.
I think the important thing is determining the date upon which you folks are going to interview candidates.
Okay.
Because I think everything probably flows from that date.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, just in response, I would think that to have the one day to the interviews and the day for all three of them to come, so that we don't stagger the days, but so that we stagger what they were doing during the days, so that the public could all be there for one day and visit all three of the candidates, as could the administrators and everything else. So that's what I was thinking.
Okay. How long would you, how long would a session like that last? I mean, a half an hour, 45 minutes?
45 minutes, maybe.
Okay. So then it would basically be, you know, 45, 45, 45.
Rotating around, if I'm understanding.
Rotating around.
You can do it that way, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we did last year.
Okay. I just, the public part of it, though, you'd want it to probably be during non-working hours. Okay, perfect.
Well, last time when we did it, we weren't able, maybe it was a principal one, but we weren't able, as a school committee member, to go in and watch the public and see the questions that they were asking, because we were busy with an interview of someone else. And personally, I would have liked to have gone in and watched the process, you know, listened to the public and the types of questions, and just seen the whole process, as I did at the, at the principal searches, and it was more informative, and I did learn more, even just by the types of questions, when I could compare the types of questions that were asked of each of the candidates by the same exact crowd. It was interesting to see the differences that came up.
Sounds like that would be an option this time, though, because you wouldn't be interviewed.
That's how we did it last year.
Yeah, you wouldn't be interviewed on that.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so, Ms. Minnick?
My question was simply whether we would schedule time for parents to meet with candidates before or after our interviews.
Okay. I mean, it sounds like, what Dr. Betancourt is saying is that we first have, we have to figure out a date that we know that the school committee can do these interviews on.
Right. And let me also just offer this, Saturdays for interviews work if that loosens things up for you folks. things up for you folks. Sometimes that proves to be a good option.
For the?
For the interviews.
For the candidate interviews. Okay. Okay. Well, I mean, I mean, we could also try to determine the date tonight.
Sure.
And then build on that, if we thought that there was a date that we could try to schedule these interviews for.
If you wish to, or if, you know, if people need to look at their calendars, scheduling meetings, as I understand it, is not something deliberative in terms of the open meeting law.
Exactly, yeah.
So if you wanted to think about that and have someone get back to us at NESTDEC with dates, if you have in mind, we can do that as well, whatever works.
I guess what I'm saying to you is, if we were, if we could only meet, you know, on a Thursday or Saturday, or my, you know, when we could meet in the week may determine whether we would do the interviews first or the visits first, or, because it sounds like you're recommending we try to keep this process somewhat compressed and not drag it out.
I think it's to your advantage, yeah, I really.
Because of all the other searches that may be going on.
I do.
Yeah.
Yes.
I might mention that next week you have two other commitments. You have a spelling bee on Wednesday evening, and you have your regular school committee meeting on Thursday evening for next week. The week of the twenty-fourth. Time goes quickly.
But it's spring.
There is Saturday. There is Saturday, the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Or even the Friday, the twenty-eighth, I suppose.
Friday and twenty.
Okay. And so, and could be, I mean, I guess it could happen whatever time, but we just have to find a time that we could all, or a quorum.
Have us have our party.
If you're going Friday, then I would suggest that it's evening, because a lot of you are working. If it's Saturday, I'm sure you could set something up either in the morning or the afternoon.
Just go on record and say, I'm out of town next week after Tuesday.
Okay, next week after Tuesday.
When do you come back?
I will miss the spelling bee. I will miss the Thursday night meeting.
Okay.
Already extended my regrets.
But when do you come back? So we know the other end.
Sunday night.
So that's not gonna happen.
So that puts that Saturday out.
I'm in person.
Yep, okay.
The rest of the board is here.
So, so I guess I'm hearing is, we're saying, our current plan is, is to try to interview these three people, us try to interview these three people at one, on one day. And we're thinking that we would like to have these three people come to sort of meet various other groups in the community, also all on one day, but on a different day. And if, for example, the day when we can interview them seems far away, we would have the, meet the people in the community on a day sooner in the interim. Whereas if we were like able to interview them all day after tomorrow or something, then we would do the community meeting time after that. Is that the?
That's right.
Is that where we're at now in this discussion?
Pretty much is it.
Okay.
And actually, if you're coming back on Sunday, does that mean you're available on a, is Monday a bad day for folks to meet, like the thirty-first, so that you could have the visitations next week and be prepared to interview? I don't want to put the, I don't want to set the date, but is that a possibility, or are we getting close?
Fine with me.
Monday, the thirty-first.
It just appears to me that that's.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sort of coming up.
So that would be two weeks from tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so next week, we would try to schedule the community meetings, community forums?
I'd rely on you folks. Is that, is next week a possibility to do that, if I worked with you, Regina, in terms of setting something up?
We could do that. We just, we need to avoid Wednesday. We could come up with a date next week. I'm sure we could.
Okay.
Would the candidates themselves, what would be better for the candidates for the interview process? Would a Saturday be better for them coming in? Because I'm also thinking of the public, too, and trying to get it done quicker. So since it wouldn't work for us to interview, would the candidates, you think, would prefer a Saturday? Easier for the public and the candidates?
I mean, I can't speak for the candidates, but Saturdays tends to be a more flexible day. But you're, you are in fact going to be a missing school committee member, so.
I'm here until next Tuesday, so if you can get them in this weekend.
Oh, this Saturday?
Yeah, I don't care.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what about this week?
So then, we're also gonna have another meeting two nights from now. I'm sorry. We're gonna have another meeting two nights from when we leave, so I think we need to keep that in mind as well. I may or may not be available in the very beginning of April for medical procedures.
Okay.
If that matters.
Okay. So Saturday, this Saturday, the twenty-second?
Twenty-second?
Any thoughts on this Saturday, the twenty-second?
It's soon, but it's doable.
Well, there's.
I think it's a great idea.
And we're talking, you know, it's probably two and a half to three hours, presumably.
Yeah, it's probably a full morning or most of an afternoon, one or the other.
Well, if we're doing it this Saturday, though, would it matter which one we did first again? I mean, are we still stuck with, I mean, not stuck with, have we, we haven't decided one way or the other, so if we're gonna do this Saturday, we could go back and do the interviews first and then worry about doing the people. So, I mean, if we're looking at it, then we can change it back or whatever. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do, but I think we're just trying to figure out what the consensus is. So if this were, so Saturday, what time would something like this typically begin?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. I mean, we have two local candidates.
Yeah, I'd say nine o'clock, and you might want to go until one, one-thirty.
Okay.
Because you'd want some time in between, I think, to take a break and to think.
Okay. Okay. Anyone have any thoughts about that?
I just have a question. So what are we thinking about for this Saturday? Are we thinking of going for us interviewing, or are we thinking of the public?
It would only be for the school committee, yeah.
Okay, so we're thinking of, okay, then the public will be different. Because I prefer them afterwards.
I think it'd be difficult to hold the visitation meetings on a Saturday, because you also want them to meet with staff in the buildings.
Right.
So unless you're gonna call staff in on Saturdays.
Right.
Probably that's not, I don't know that that's, you're not gonna be able to get the same number of people that are here, so.
Well, I agree. I mean, I'm in support of that, though. I just was clarifying.
Yep. Yes.
As far as the scheduling on Saturday, I would suggest, I'm not sure if people need a long break, but, I mean, I certainly think we could do an interview an hour. I think that would be reasonable. I don't think we need to stretch it out. That's my opinion more than that.
Well, I think they're an hour, but I would suggest you have ten minutes between, minimal.
You may want to refine your questions. You want some time to, perhaps jot down some notes.
Maybe go to the bathroom.
And go to the bathroom, yeah. It's an interesting idea.
Okay. So I, so, so it sounds like the folks that are here, at least, it's doable in the morning, on this Saturday morning. So, so if you'd like to try to make that happen.
If, if our candidates are not available, then would Monday evening be available?
I think our candidates will be available, by my sense.
Probably, but.
Is that an issue, or is that?
Well, I, you bring up a good point. If there's an alternative, that in the event that I can't get everybody in, is there another date you can offer? For example, if.
Monday, the twenty-fourth?
If I could get only two of the three in on Saturday, could you offer another date where you could be available in the evening for an interview?
And you can do Monday, the twenty-fourth, right, Lisa, before you leave?
I can do the twenty-fourth Monday also. Anyone else?
Yes, although I can say, I know that this room is booked that night for another event that I'm supposed to be at, but if, that's okay. I can certainly work around that. So the twenty-fourth.
Tuesday night.
What's that?
Go for Tuesday night.
You can do Tuesday night?
Yeah, I can, too.
You can do Tuesday? I thought you were leaving Tuesday.
I'm leaving after Tuesday.
After Tuesday.
On after Tuesday.
So Monday or, I mean, I know that this room is booked on Monday for a different meeting, but that's, so Monday or Tuesday night, anyone have a preference on that as an alternate date?
Monday.
Okay. So it sounds like we have.
Three days.
Three?
Three.
So, okay. So it's Saturday, the twenty-second, from approximately nine to twelve?
Yeah.
It would be Monday, the twenty-fourth, approximately seven to nine?
Of the two, I would prefer the twenty-third, I mean, the twenty-fifth over the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
But that's, again, and also this room will not be available that night, so if that's a consideration.
So Tuesday, Monday and Tuesday, the beginning time would be seven? Okay.
On Saturday, you said nine?
If that's the earliest you'd want to meet, seven.
Could it be earlier than seven, or do, what's?
Can people make it earlier than seven?
Could it be six o'clock?
If you wish.
That would just make it a little bit earlier.
Six, starting at six?
Okay.
Okay. Now, just so we're clear, it could be that Saturday doesn't work for any of them. Are you giving me the authorization then to work on the Monday and Tuesday? Trying to get them all in on one evening, but if I can't get them in on one of those two evenings? Yes?
I believe that's yes.
Preferably Tuesday.
Preferably Tuesday, got that.
But first choice was to have all three of them on the same day, right?
Yeah, I think that's our first choice.
Yeah, first choice is everyone.
That's the first choice, but it, in the event that we can't do that, this is a good fallback. Is, am I interpreting that correct?
I think that's, I think we're interpreting Saturday as our first choice.
So Saturday's our first choice for all three, but if we can't do three, and we can, they can do three on Tuesday or Monday, then we would prefer to do all three. Is that correct, what you're finally saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Let me just check you out on that now, so I know what you, what you, the way you're interpreting that. It could conceivably be that the interviews would be on more than one evening.
Preferably not, though.
Preferably not. It's conceivable that, for example, two could come in on a Saturday and one could come in on a Tuesday.
Only if we can't get all three of them to come in on the Tuesday at that point.
Our first choice is all three on Saturday. Our second choice is all three some other time.
Right.
And the third choice is to split them up.
Yeah.
So it sounds like Saturday's a preference, if we could only just do it all, all three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I can't get all three on one evening, I will.
You can follow back.
Speak with Regina and we'll see how we go.
We can go back out to the group.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah. And then you'll work with, and so that allows us the opportunity then to do the community visit some other day that week. Okay.
Yeah, and again, if you were to give Regina and myself the flexibility to work those things through, we could probably do it offline and.
Wednesday and Thursday are, well, Thursday, we have a meet, we have a meeting, and then Wednesday is a large school community event here. So that's gonna be a tough night to try to schedule it.
It always happens. That's, you know, the conflict's all over.
So that sort of leaves the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth.
Unless we're doing interviews.
So you may have, that date could be driven by, by whatever happens with the interviews. If they can come the twenty-fourth, then maybe it's the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
And I guess the thirty-first would be a fallback for the visit.
Friday, the twenty-eighth. Why did we go all the way to the thirty-first?
I just don't know if you'd had an event on a Friday evening, how many parents you would, if you were to have the forum on a Friday evening. I'm just not sure that that would be.
You were saying it's date night.
It's date night, yes. It's date night.
Okay, so just to be sure, clear. Your first preference is to have all three candidates meeting on the same day or evening. Your first choice is Saturday, the twenty-second. Your second choice is Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. And your third, your third choice is Monday, the twenty-fourth. Monday and Tuesday, you'd begin at six P.M. The Saturday, you'd begin approximately nine A.M. Got that right?
Perfect.
Okay. And are you authorizing me to work with Regina on the visitations?
Yes.
Okay.
Community members will have enough time to notice on this.
Yes. We can also do a robo-call home as well, to give plenty of notice, to let them know about the forums and.
That's great. That's a great idea.
Now, you'll need, at some point, you will want to make a decision or put yourselves in a position to make a decision about whether or not you're going to visit the candidates. So you're, you have some time to do that, although you really have to meet in order to make that kind of a decision, I think. It's not one you can necessarily make offline, so.
Is it one we could make on the day of the interviews, or?
Yes.
After the interviews, we could make?
Absolutely could.
Okay.
Yep.
And I mean, well, we also have, we have a meeting scheduled next Thursday as well. We could, we could add to the agenda.
Yep.
Particularly if the forums happen before that meeting.
Sure.
We could add that to the agenda for Thursday as another item, just a discussion point.
Okay.
To talk about whether we schedule visits.
Okay. These are all posted meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And in fact, I would even post the visitation days if I were, because there may be school committee members roaming around. And even though it's not technically a meeting, I think to post them all is a good idea. Just post it as if it were open meeting.
Would there be anything wrong with having that discussion tonight to figure out whether we wanted to do site visits to, for these candidates or not?
Well.
Certainly could, but I'm not sure. It sounded like people wanted to have that as an option, but, go ahead.
Well, my thought on that is if we have, I mean, if we, when we go through the process, if we as a committee basically decide, wow, this person stands above and beyond everyone else, and that's what we decide, then we may not really want to do all three of the site visits. I mean, we can leave ourselves open to that if it's, I mean, it, I don't know if it's a runaway or not. I have no idea. I haven't looked at them at all, so I don't know. But we might not want to do all of the three site visits like we didn't with the principal search last time, and we just did the ones that we ended up taking and making sure before we offered it to the person. But I don't know, and I also don't know if that will matter, if you, what you, whether you think we should see all of them, considering the fact that some of them are being asked about in other districts. So that, to me, would change that also, that maybe we should go out just because other people are going to.
Out of a sense of fairness, that everybody should have the same sort of experience. So if you're gonna do site visits, you should do site visits. If you're not, you don't. And if you're not gonna do site visits and you're gonna do calling references, then that's fine. That's why I thought we could just go ahead and make that decision now about.
I think the principals, they used it more as a vetting. They used it more to vet them at that point, after they'd already basically decided.
Again, I think that, that everybody should have the same experience, and I, I think that the superintendent searches, of which I've been a part before now, we have done, not the most recent one last fall, but prior to that, we did site visits for a number of candidate. I guess we didn't do one last spring either, but before that, we always did site visits. In fact, people flew to Maine and California, and, or maybe they drove to Maine. But I mean, we, we sent people across the country to look at candidates, and I thought it was valuable. But I will tell you that in one instance, we sent some people here and some different people there, and that was a bad idea. Whoever's doing site visits, it needs to be the same group going to each place, because we ended up with, the people who went to California liked that person, the people who went to Maine liked that person, and the people who went locally liked that person. And it, we sat here and debated for hours because of that. So, for that reason, I'd suggest that whoever's doing the site visits, do the site visits. And I will admit also that there is some significant expense, depending on where you're going. These candidates are more local, but, you know, it's somebody's time and effort. And it is, for, for the candidate, they're actually pulling people out of classrooms, they're, they're selecting different people that, and they're scheduling much the same way that we schedule people when they're coming here to meet with a, they're scheduling someone to meet with you in their district. So it, it's vaguely disruptive, and it's a worthwhile disruption, but it is a, it's a commitment for them. So if we're not gonna do it, we can save them the angst of even thinking about it by just saying right now that we're just gonna do telephone interviews.
So do you have a preference?
I, I don't really have a preference, and I, and Mr. Ball said something about thinking that we should save the site visits until after we've done the interviews, and I would have said the exact opposite. But, you know, I think if your experience is that more and more districts these days are doing an in-depth telephone interviews with the different references, that seems reasonable to me. I mean, I think there are some things to be learned from doing a site visit, but I also think it's time-consuming and it's a big commitment. And I'm not sure, as I said, I think you have to send the same group to each place or it doesn't work. And that's an even big, that's maybe three days, certainly two days, of taking somebody and saying, okay, now you're not doing the rest of your life for those two days, which, so I would say phone, I guess, if I had to choose.
Okay. So that's a, okay.
All I just want to say is if we do choose the site visits, I volunteer to do any of the one to three days that needed to be done, if that's necessary. So whatever, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. I can see advantages to both of them. I can see advantages to going and seeing that they're vetted after we've already made the decision and do the phone visits. And I, I think maybe we should go and see all three of them. I mean, if that's what the other districts are doing, I think maybe we should go see them, too. But I don't care.
Okay. We've got Mr. Moore, then the superintendent wanted to add something.
Yeah, I just wanted to add my voice to what Lisa said. I think we should decide now what we're doing in terms of process, as opposed to wait until we've gotten partway through and then see if we're gonna make more process. And, and that's. And, and that's, that's the first question, I think we should decide now whether we're doing in terms of visits or interviewing references, and I, and my, my thought right now is that I, I, I feel like we should not do the site visits, I, in terms of both the timeline, but also in terms of the, um, you know, I, I just, I just, I just don't know that you get a complete enough picture. You know, it's, it's, you know, you might, you might tend to give it more weight than it ought to get, is I guess what I'm sort of saying, because you made a significant investment in it, so you'd like to give it a lot of weight, but I'm not sure you can get that much better information, so you give it the weight that you're giving, I think you may give it more weight than it deserves. So, at the moment, and then I don't know about the phone interviews, I think, but that would be where I would stand.
Okay.
I might, I would recommend that you do the intensive telephone interviews, simply because I'm afraid we're going to lose candidates if we stretch this out too long. A minimum is a day for each of those site visits, even though they're local, you really need to spend the time there if you're going. And, you know, I sort of have an investment in this district, and I would really like to see you end up with a superintendent by July 1st, so I would recommend that you do the intensive telephone interviews and not do the site visits for the very fact that these are active candidates, and if you've got the right person here, you don't want to lose them.
Ms. Menick?
I would agree, I think the intensive phone interviews are more appropriate. I think if you were to do site visits, that's really having a candidate commit three days, each candidate coming here to interview, then coming to meet with parents and administrators, and then again, having us come to their district. I think that's a lot, and I don't, I'm not sure that people would love to have.
Okay. So it sounds like you're hearing consensus formed that, that we would lean toward not doing the site visits, but opting instead for the intensive phone reference checks.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, good. That's a lot of decision-making.
Okay.
And how, who would be, who would be doing those reference checks and when? Sorry if I'm usurping your...
Well, let me give you a little perspective on that. The reference checking that we do is, is reference checking to determine that there aren't problems in the background, ethical issues, legal issues, those kinds of things. Those are the kinds of checks we do. We don't, and we really can't put ourselves in the position of determining whether their style and, and, you know, the way they work with people and, and, you know, their background is, is in line with, with your thinking. So we would suggest to you that we would put you in touch with whomever your contact is on your committee, put you in touch with people that we think can give you some perspective on each of the candidates, and that you would assign one or two people from the school committee to do that.
Did that answer the question?
Well, it did, gave us some advice. I guess I was hoping that maybe we would make that decision right now as to who would be conducting those interviews and how quickly they might get done.
Okay. So, thoughts on that? We have our, what's that? Not it, okay, thank you. Well, we have, we, you know, we do have the members of the...
I would do it.
You would?
I would do it also, I mean, volunteer if necessary.
Okay. And you're suggesting two to three people?
Yeah, I would think a couple of people is probably enough, but if you, if you had three, it makes the job that much lighter for, for everybody.
Okay, okay.
I mean, it's perfectly appropriate for the chair to contact the chair of the school committee in that district. So, you know, a job-alike type thing, it's also appropriate for someone assigned by the committee to, to contact the references that were listed by the candidates. Am I correct?
Well, they, we would get you more.
Okay. So, so beyond that, I mean, the internet is available to everyone, but I, but it's not probably appropriate for me to just start calling everybody I know in Plymouth and asking what they think of the superintendent or whatever it is, so I mean, it's, there, there are some parameters that you try to follow when you're doing reference checks.
Okay. So it sounds like we have some volunteers, and I guess I've been volunteered as well.
Sounds that way.
And in terms of, for the candidates who are not currently superintendents, would it be appropriate for our superintendents to speak with their superintendent?
Actually, at this point, the names are public, it's appropriate for you to call anybody.
Okay.
I mean, virtually, it's, it's an open field, and I, I liked what you said about having some parameters. On the other hand, I wouldn't restrict myself too much, because if you know people in the community, those might be the people that you want to talk to, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And these candidates all know that their, their name is out there and that we're checking references.
Okay. So, we can certainly begin that right away, and I'm happy to work with Mr. Ball and Ms. Minnick, Ms. Minnick to begin that process, and we can coordinate through, working with you through perhaps our central office staff to get us that information that we need to be setting those up. Okay. Are there, and if there's others who are interested in being part of that, I don't see a lot of volunteers, okay? Okay, go ahead.
Just one question, did you only check these references that they provided, or did you go further in the scope of what they provided?
We typically call people that we know, and as I said, we're not, we're not checking references for style, we're checking for problems, so it's, it's a different, it's a different level.
So it's entirely possible that you did not check any of the references they listed?
It's possible, yeah.
Be sure the person's certified and doesn't have DUI on their record.
Please, no.
Gun charges.
No, no.
Okay. So, any other items that you need us to discuss or decide upon?
You game to go on for a while?
Sure.
Okay, you did very well with those decisions, those are very difficult to do. I think you did a great job. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about how you're going to set yourselves up for your interviews in terms of what the room will look like, how, how the interviews will unfold. I think the mayor was assuming that the interviews would be held here, okay. You'd want to think about your setup in terms of how your table and all is going to set up so that you can see the candidate, the candidate can see you, but also, are you televising these, I'm assuming?
We have been, yes.
As well, so you might want to think about that. The other thing you might want to think about is a greeter and the green room, in other words, the holding room for the person, which is someplace close by that might be comfortable with some refreshments perhaps, and some reading materials and things like that, because the candidates typically overlap. They, they tend to come early and, you know, and so you'd want some, someone to greet them, and someplace where they could relax prior to their interview with you.
Okay. Now, our last interviews, we did in this setup, just as you see it, and we had the candidates sit over there at that, the empty part of the dais.
Yeah, I'd leave that up to you, if it worked the last time, I don't know, you might...
Put them there.
Looking at camera angle, it might be better here, but I don't really know.
I'd love to see a table just right across there, but that would, you'd have to ask if the, if the camera...
If we had a table here facing us, could you do one of your remote cameras facing them? You'd have to do a shot from over here. Okay, so it's possible, it'd be a one, one, one-time thing, okay?
Okay. The other thing that we want to talk, talk about is, I'm assuming that the chair will moderate the, the interviews in terms of calling on people to, to ask questions and that sort of thing, and determine whether or not a follow-up is appropriate, that sort of thing.
Yes.
Okay. And we would want to, in your, in your packet, on the right-hand side of your packet, is a sheet with interview techniques, I won't go through it, but you might want to read that on your own after leisure and take a look at that. The other thing that I would ask you to think about is actually formulating some questions. What we usually do to help you along in terms of the question development process is to offer you some themes, which are also on the right-hand side of your folder. And this is not an exhaustive list, there may be other things that are on your mind, but, Mr. Mayor, what we usually do is ask if it's possible for school committee members to pick a theme, and to go home and then develop a couple of questions around that theme. And then those would be the interview questions that you, that you would use during the interview process with the candidates. Some folks think that you have to ask the same question word for word for each candidate. I would suggest to you that that really isn't necessary, that you certainly, I think, can, can refine the questions, depending upon who the candidate is in front of you and, and, you know, the background that candidate may have. I would suggest that the, thematically, the questions remain the same, and that thematically they remain in the same order unless you have some unusual circumstances for, for doing otherwise. So I think if you wish, part of the work for this evening would be for school committee members to choose a theme, with the understanding that in the interim between now and the interviews, each school committee member would develop a question or two around that theme.
Okay. Okay.
Would it be inappropriate for us to look back at the questions that we've used for the last two interview rounds?
I can also tell you that there are questions in your packet, you really don't have to reinvent the wheel, there are two sheets of questions that in fact may, may suffice for the area that you choose.
Okay.
That's not to say that these are...
We've just, we've just been through this drill, so we had a whole list of questions developed.
They may still be relevant, yeah.
Okay. So what are folks' preferences on that? We can certainly circulate the former questions from the past, and you'll also have these sample questions, but in terms of the idea of choosing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, well, we've got 12, 12 potential categories, there's 10 of us, so we would have to develop, you know, 12, are you suggesting 12 questions?
10 questions, 10, 12 questions. You may not even get to 10, you might, it's usually around eight questions that you get in.
Okay.
And you don't have to hit all the themes, I mean, some of these themes may not be relevant for your district, and so you may not wish to do them all, or you may have other themes that you'd wish to introduce.
Okay. So what are people's thoughts in terms of the thematic approach versus looking at the questions we've used in the past, looking at the other sample questions?
Question?
Yes.
I just have a question. So if we're only going to make eight and that, there's 12, did you, you had suggested that we keep them in the same order, though, here, is that...
No, in whatever order you choose, not the order on the sheet.
Oh, okay, so whatever order we choose, just keep them in the same order for all the candidates?
And I would suggest that you, I would suggest that you develop 10 questions so that you have enough, but you might not get through all 10, and you'll, obviously, as you get into the interview process. Or, I mean, if you've got questions and you just want to assign the questions that you have, that's perfectly fine, if you feel it'll suffice.
Okay. Thoughts, input, Ms. Minnick?
Simply that we have enough new members on the committee that I'd like to give them the opportunity to look at those questions that we used the last time and see if they believe they're relevant and that, you know, I just think they should have the opportunity to say, you know, this is something that's important to me, I'd like to see a question about this, and that's not included in this. So I don't know, I don't know when we're going to sit around and make up new questions.
Well, that's, yeah, particularly if it's Saturday. If this is happening on Saturday...
That's kind of...
Yeah, so we need, and when, of course, in terms of we were to begin deliberating on what questions we should ask, that should be done in an open meeting.
Exactly.
It's not really a ministerial function, developing questions, so we either have to circulate it, have, have people submit things, their thoughts and input individually to a central place, and then delegate to somebody to select, you know, the 10 questions or something, there's just, there can't be any interplay or back and forth about it, there can't be any deliberation about it.
Can we add to our agenda on Wednesday?
What's that?
I said, could we add to our agenda on Wednesday evening, we are having a meeting then, I don't know how long it's going to take.
I think it's going to be pretty late to do that.
We'd have to have, had posted it by today in order to make the, yeah.
And we're not starting till 7:30, it's 7:30 to 9:30.
Yeah, yes.
Just trying to help, I, I've thoroughly confused everybody by saying this, but usually at the school committee level, there isn't a lot of refinement of the question, because at your level, what you're more likely to do is to have a conversational kind of interview with the candidate, so I'm not sure that there's a lot of drafting and redrafting and, and looking at closely at language so much as making sure that the question that you ask is clear. What you might want to do is consider coming early on the date of your interviews, posted as, as an early meeting, or posted as earlier in the evening, and then just briefly share what your questions are and determine what the order might be. That typically takes a half hour or so, usually, when you really, when you really get down to it. It's just another way of expediting things if you choose to go.
Okay. Mr. Shefflow?
I think last time, Dr. Nash, didn't you assign us each a question?
Um, I think I might have done that.
Yes.
I would just suggest, because I think a concern last time was, if we discuss them, if we discuss the questions ahead of time, everyone's going to know what the questions are, so, you know, I would, I would say either redistribute the questions again, or if you like, assign, assign a theme to everybody and we can be adult about it and come up with a question.
What if I take the last, the questions from last time, look at the questions we've got here, or look at the themes, if any of you want to email me with a particular area you're interested in, then I'll see you get those questions, and otherwise, I'll just assign them, while Art sits there and laughs.
It's wonderful.
It's just...
Very typical, but it's wonderful, that's great.
It's easier to do, and if no one else objects to it, I'm happy to do it.
I just think given our timeframe, it's hard for us to do this in a deliberative way, because we have to have a, we have to have a posted meeting if we're going to have a substantive discussion about what the questions are.
That's terrific, that's great.
So then, just go ahead, Mr. Ball.
Well, on that, I was just wondering, because, I mean, we get critiques on everything and letters on everything that we've done, so my question is, with the last questions that we had to the school committee, did we have any overall complaints or critiques on them that we might want to address and incorporate into these questions? That's what, the only thing, because I'm not really sure that we had, I mean, if, I know we had issues about other things, but I'm not sure if we had issues about that, because if we didn't, then we have okay questions, because if we weren't okay to the public or, I'm sure somebody would have said something, and I think that's the only thing, and otherwise, I'm in total support of Dr. Nash gathering and wrapping bows on them and handing them back out.
I would, I don't recall any complaints about our questions, I really do think if, if somebody has a specific issue or concern or question, that, and you don't see it reflected in the list of questions that were already asked, I would suggest that you forward that to Dr. Nash. And I also just want to go on record as saying that I had, I was, what's the right word? I was miffed when we were assigned questions the last time, because I felt like it was our decision to select those 12 questions we wanted, however, having, having now had a conversation where we're asking her to assign questions to us, I'm perfectly comfortable with that, so...
Unless, of course, we write her and say we'd like to ask questions along this line, so we do have that open.
And I will, I will tell her which one I want to ask, if, you know, given that opportunity. I'm sure she's offered that, so I will let her know.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, you know, I did get one criticism about our questions last time, and I think it actually was more of a criticism of the committee, but, but the way, the way the criticism was framed was that, that too many of our questions were asking, were sort of general, sort of what would you do as a superintendent, how would you approach, those kinds of questions. And the criticism was that we hadn't, didn't ask, how would you achieve an objective which we have decided we want to get to? And, I mean, like I said, it's sort of a criticism of the committee, because the committee doesn't, hasn't set out some objectives, and we're looking for somebody to get there, and maybe, and maybe that's not how we should work, I don't know, but I mean, that was the thought, the thought was, well, maybe you'd ask some questions where, you know, we've got a problem here, how would you solve it? And get, so really much more concrete and specific answers about a specific and concrete thing in the district, as opposed to where the answers tended to be, sort of, you know, how, what's your vision, how do you go about, how do you go about forming consensus, yada, da-da-da, more like, look, you know, we want to get, you know, better participation in our lunch program, how are you going to get that to happen? Or, you know, some specific, some specific thing that, that we know we'd like to have, how are we going to do it? The problem, again, would be then we'd all have to g... The problem, again, would be then we'd all have to agree that that's something we all were sure we wanted to see happen, and, you know...
I think we have a district improvement plan, but I don't think that we have some, I mean, I'm not going to ask somebody walking in off the street how they would change the late start time.
But they felt that that would be, right, so, but they felt like it would be much more revealing in terms of what the candidates could actually, of how they approached the problem if you asked them how they would approach a problem, you know, a specific problem. And so anyway, that would be something I would think of, if you could have some questions.
If Dr. Nash sees an area where she thinks a question could be reworded that would get more specific, or would...
Would we all agree on the issue?
I think the problem with that is, in order to solve that sort of problem, they need to know what on before, who are the players in that problem?
Right.
And it really puts them at a disadvantage.
Right, and the thing is, there may be, well, the temptation to hold them to this answer if we hire them. But, but anyway, I think it was a valid criticism in terms of some of our questions were a little too general, allowed people just to answer with a series of appropriate buzzwords and, you know...
That was a criticism, that's right, the buzzwords.
But, but I understand the problem in the other direction of being, if you're too specific, you may be asking them to be more specific than is really fair to ask them to be, I don't know.
I think a lot of those questions that we do ask, a lot of times, are around the idea or the theme of, just being on these committees in the past, can you, can you speak to us about a challenging situation you've worked on in your district and how you worked to fix it, and who are the players, the constituents you brought in to help solve that problem? Can you explain your, your methods? And maybe at that point, we can think of one of the areas in our own district that that could be applicable to, and see if it might fit in.
Other thoughts or comments? So, it sounds like what we'll do is redistribute to the committee our questions from the last process, and obviously, we have the packet of some other suggested questions, so I guess the homework would be to ask committee members to take a look through all that, and then communicate just directly to the superintendent with your input suggestions, if there's a question that stands out in the samples, or a question that stands out on the last one, good or bad, just communicate that to her, or if something's missing.
I love this question, lovely S.
Potentially.
I hate this question, love Howard.
Potential, that's a possibility.
I don't know what to do.
I also think it's important that we stick to those questions that we did ask, and that, again, I want, I don't want the perception in the public being that our interim superintendent was responsible for the questions that, that we were to ask to hire our superintendent for our schools, and it shouldn't be conducted by an interim superintendent on the question she, she's asking. And so I think it's important that we stick to the questions that we used last time, and certainly, if someone has a theme that they're really interested in, either call or email and make sure that you're involved in the conversation, and that the public knows that that's the approach we're using, and certainly, we're not saddling Dr. Nash with creating these questions, but they really are our questions that we've worked on in the past, and we're just asking her to redistribute them out, and if there's something that we want to add to them, we'll speak to her about it, and she'll speak to us about it before we roll them out to the finalists.
And I would just clarify that that's what I was going to do.
Certainly.
We have three different people from the time last time around, so unless you tell me your preference of those questions, you may or may not get the same one you asked before. Those were the questions, I'm not making up any of the questions, no.
You may, me, all right, you may not be making up any of the questions, however, I trust your input as far as, from the position of experience that you have to be able to look at the questions, and if they need something, or you feel that they need something, or they need, from your experience already being in the district, I mean, that's very, very valuable, even though they are basically the same questions, if you found them to be better, or that there was something could be better, I would be more apt to trust and want to discuss that, because I just value your experience from so many years that you've been doing this, that I don't think it would be left to the burden of, or to the misconception that you, the superintendent was the person responsible for our search, or the questions, or anything, we have questions, I think maybe they might need to be refined, I would bug them to be changed a little bit, because I wasn't really totally happy with them exactly the way they were, not all of them, some of them, but mostly, if you felt the need to change them, I would hope that you would change it, and that we still wouldn't need to go and say that you were responsible for it, because it's still us.
I think your questions were very good the last time around, and what I would suggest is, when you get those questions, you let me know your preferences on them, and if you, once you have that question, you have a need to change the wording, et cetera, then I think that's perfectly within your right.
Great.
But I think that that's the important way of doing it.
We can call you and ask for your input, Ben.
Ms. Minnick?
With your approval, if you are tired of standing there after an hour now, would you like to have a seat at the table?
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Just feel bad for you leaning on a podium the whole evening.
Okay, so, so that, I hope, addresses that issue of the questions, development of the questions.
It does, I think that's a fine way to go ahead.
Okay.
Just remind you of the need to think about an icebreaker question, in other words, the first question that you ask, which typically might come from the chair, and it's the general question in terms of, you know, what brings you here, is, and, you know, any variations in that theme, yeah? How this fits into your career path and that sort of thing.
Okay.
The other thing, is, are you an attorney, sir?
No, I am not.
Is there an attorney on the board?
There are several.
Oh, gosh, okay.
There's one over there.
And I don't have, I don't have...
Surrounded by them.
I don't have to...
This one's an attorney.
I don't have to go over the kinds of questions to avoid. There are questions that you should not be asking, or even implying in your questioning in terms of the candidates, and I'll assume that you folks have a good handle on that. The other thing that you may want to think about in terms of the organization of your, of your evening with the candidates is, do you want the candidates to make an opening statement, or would you prefer the candidates be given time at the end of their interview for questions, and a concluding statement? And we went through this with the, with the screening committee, I don't know what you decided in the screening committee, actually, did you, how did you do it?
The last question we included in, the opportunity for a closing statement, but you also find that in their opening remarks, when they talk about that icebreaker, that many will weave in kind of an opening statement as well.
So you have your own in-house expert for questions right here, he's been through it already. And probably, many of the, or some of the questions will be similar to the questions that you asked in your screening committee, which is fine. Other things that we might want to talk about, public relations, who will be talking and communicating with the press, or those who make inquiries into the process at this point? The chair?
The chair or the vice chair?
Okay, all righty. And let me just go through a couple of other things with you, in the back of your, again, on the right-hand side of your folder, there's a candidate evaluation form, which nobody uses. And the reason nobody uses it is because everybody seems to have their own way of sort of taking notes regarding the candidates, but you're certainly welcome to use this to reproduce it if you choose, or to revise it in any way that you would like. And having gone through everything, the last, the last thing I would leave you with is to remind you that you went through the process of developing a candidate profile, and so one of the things, one of the important things that I think you want to do, as you think about your interviews and the questions that you select for your interview, your interviews, is the profile and asking questions that in fact are aligned with your profile. Those are the, those are the things that you, as a school committee, determined were important for you in your next superintendent, and that process included community input into that, into that whole process. So, the candidate profile, which is on the left-hand side of your packet toward the, toward the back, would be something that you would want to review in anticipation of your interviews.
Thank you for bringing that up as well, I can tell you, for being part of the screening committee, that was one of the homework assignments that I made sure that we all did in preparation for screening of the applications, was to look at the profile that was developed by the community, and make sure it was aligned with the applicants, and that's really how we did our work on the screening committee, so I'm hoping that as we get to meet these finalists again, you should see that they do represent what the community has asked for in the profile.
With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, the areas that...
Are there any follow-on questions, or? Mr. Moore?
Not, not really for you, I was wondering if we should at least tentatively schedule a date for, for making the decision of who we're going to hire? I mean, I know we need to have all of us there, since we're not all here, but maybe have at least a date that we put a mark on for those of us who are here, so that, at least get that process started, so that, if it turns out that either down here, Pam can't do it, we'll go from there, but maybe we should go ahead and schedule that now, sooner than later?
Well, the, it's a good question, we have the, some of it will also depend on when these other meetings get scheduled.
Although, Ms. Minnick will be out of town until?
I'm happy that the school committee is scheduling around my...
It's very thoughtful.
When are you coming back, though?
The 30th.
Which is after the week during which we hope this will have happened.
So there's the potential of...
April Fool's Day?
The 31st, yeah. The 31st, or the 1st, or, so those are possibilities. Okay, so that's just our own internal calibration.
May I share that with the candidates, because they may ask in general what the decision date would be?
I think that's, you can certainly, if that, yeah, I think, yeah, that's our goal is to have a, is to have a very tight...
Great, okay.
I'm going to be unavailable Monday, March 31st.
What, April Fool's Day?
April Fool's, I should be available.
So it looks like April 1, rather than...
Yes, sorry.
It will be a bright sunny day, 70 degrees, light breeze, no snow.
I'm going to drive in.
We can all, okay, well, thank you so much, Dr. Beckenford.
Thank you, you did a great job, you really did, a lot of decisions, and you handled them very well, thank you, good luck.
Thank you, you did a great job.
We'll be in touch.
We will.
Thank you. Okay, the only other items on our agenda, oh, except Ms. Minnick?
Except for Ms. Minnick, I was always going to fly in the wings. I sent you, I think, a summary of the discussion that we had at a meeting last August with administrators, do you remember that, at Smith College, you had a meeting with them? And I took notes of all the things they were concerned about, and I think I've sent that to you.
A while ago, right?
Yeah, yeah, a long time ago.
Right.
Several weeks after that meeting.
Right.
Think you have it, or?
I can go through my files.
I can go look and see if I have it, but...
Yeah, it was in August.
That was, if, I don't know if anybody else is interested in reviewing what those administrators said to us about... We basically did a sort of a round robin, Dr. Nash had set it up, so that we spoke with different, you know, we set it, we had a progressive dinner, if you will, and talked with different groups of administrators about what they saw as important issues, and there was a lot of repetition in many ways, but there were also just some interesting topics that were raised about what, what they thought was important in a new superintendent, and we did not revise our interview questions necessarily to reflect those things, but just knowing what they had said helps you hear the answers differently. So I thought, if that's valuable, I'll see if I can unearth it.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the only other announcements are, just to remind people that we have our school committee training on the 19th of this week at 7:30 here at the JFK Community Room, and that Budget and Property will be meeting, the Budget and Property Committee will be meeting on Thursday, March 20th at 5:00 PM at the superintendent's office, and then the school committee will have its next regular meeting on next Thursday, March 27th at 7:15 PM, and there's a possibility that there may be superintendent candidate interviews in the intervening time, to be determined, so... Exactly.
Miscellaneous business.
We may want to start deciding the nights we won't be meeting, at the rate we're going. Okay, so, no other business, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstention, this special meeting of the North Hampton School Committee is adjourned, thank you.